Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first order of business is mayor's public announcements, and since discussing Alderman Jean Baptiste is later in the agenda, I have no public announcements except thank you all for coming. I think it was the first time the entire city council came to a state-of-the-city speech, and I was very touched. Thank you. City manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. A few announcements. First, happy to introduce Greg Kleiber, our fire chief, who's here to talk a little bit about some recent events impacting the fire department. Chief Kleiber, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here this evening to bring you some good news. I'm going to repeat that. I'm here to bring you some good news. As the agenda item talks states, I'm going to discuss our annual report from 2010 as well as the ISO report, and that'll be the second part of what I'm about to say. So, thank you, citizens of Evanston, Madam Mayor, city clerk, members of the city council. What I'd like to talk about first is our annual report, and I'm going to divide that up into three sections. We'll talk about numbers and response statistics, highlights of 2010, and talk about 2011, what we'd like to do this year, some of our goals and objectives in moving forward into this year and beyond. First, a little background, because I know all of you know, you know, some of the things about our department, but perhaps there are some folks at home that are not aware of who we are and what we do. We have 107 sworn personnel in our department, 110 total personnel. We have five fire stations located throughout the city of Evanston. We have, within those five fire stations, we have five engines, five fire engines, two aerial ladder trucks, two ambulances, and a majority of our firefighters, about 90% of them or more, are also paramedics. So they're trained, cross-trained in both EMS paramedic, they have paramedic license from IDA, Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as perform firefighting duties. So what that allows us to do is, in addition to that, we have, all of our engines and trucks are equipped with advanced life support equipment. And one of the most frequently asked questions we have is, why does an engine or a truck respond with an ambulance on ambulance calls? When I call 911 and I'm, you know, I'm injured or I'm sick, why do you send an engine? Well, for the most efficient reason, that is, an engine can often respond much faster and are closer to your home than an ambulance, and they can initiate care and then get that ambulance, transfer the care to the ambulance crew, and then take, transport the patient to the hospital. So, in 2010, we responded to 8,917 calls for service, which resulted in over 19,000 fire department apparatus responses for the year. This was our second highest call volume in the history of our department. And if you look in the pages of the report, you'll see that over the last 25 years, our call volume has increased about 32%. So we, 25 years ago, our total call volume was 20, about 6,100 calls, and it's now 8,900. So we've gone up 32% in that period of time with relatively the same resources. 5,400 of those 8,900 calls, or a little more than 5,400, are EMS-related. So about 62% of our call volume is EMS-related. The rest of our calls have to do with fire response, so 3,425 of our calls are related to fire response. In 2010, we responded and responded to and mitigated a total of 157 fires resulting in an estimated loss of about $1.2 million in property value. Now, when we talk about and we report fires, we always report loss, but we don't do a very good job of reporting the property that we actually save, and what we do, and the professionalism of our firefighters. And that's about what, that's what I'm about to do now. So, as a result of our firefighters' outstanding efforts, tactics, and our excellent response times, we were able to save over 97% of the properties involved in structure fires for a total of over $53 million in saved property value last year. Our firefighters take great pride in how quickly we respond to our communities' homes and businesses, and for 2010, our average response times were once again below the four-minute standard set by the National Fire Protection Administration, NFPA. There are many highlights for the Evanston Fire and Life Safety Services this year, or last year. Number one, we received and took possession of a $550,000 fire engine from Northwestern We are very appreciative of that donation. It's now in service at Station 3, up at 1105 Central Street, as Engine 23. So we're very grateful for their donation. In 2010, we were able to offer all of our paramedics the opportunity to obtain advanced certification. Our paramedics receive pediatric advanced life support certification, and it's an American Heart Association offering, which enhances the paramedic skills and knowledge about pediatric medical issues. Additionally, we received a $600,000 grant from FEMA. This will be used towards the purchase of an aerial ladder truck, which we will take possession of this spring. It will replace Truck 22 at Station Number 2 at 702 Madison. That truck, Truck 22, is currently in service, has been in service for 20 years. And last year, for the first time, our department's paramedics partnered with Evanston's Northshore University Hospital and participated in paramedic training at its state-of-the-art simulator laboratory. That partnership and training will continue on a regular basis. Finally, in 2010, which I'll talk about in just a minute regarding the ISO report, we were evaluated by the insurance services office in 2010, and what they do is measure a city or a department's ability to provide fire protection services. The evaluation examined the capabilities of our fire department, water department, 911 Communication Center, and what we, the result of that evaluation gave us an improved rating, and I'll go into more detail of that in just a minute. Looking ahead to 2011, we're going to offer a test for new firefighters this spring, May 21st. Talked about that a little bit in AP&amp;W a few minutes ago, and I'm going to be relying upon all of our city council members to get the word out through their various means of communication, as well as other means of communication. So what we're trying to do this year, and we formed a recruitment team, we're going to be out in the community attempting to do a better job of recruiting firefighters from the community of Evanston, the young people in this town, who hopefully we can find someone who have a desire to serve their own community and their own department. That's a goal of mine, and it's shared with our department as we move forward. On top of that, I want to improve our community outreach beyond just recruitment over the next couple of months for a new test, for new firefighters. We'll be offering CPR classes for our community. We haven't done that for quite some time. We're going to be implementing a Fire Explorer cadet program for Evanston's youth, and I would also like, more internally, is to focus on risk management and injury prevention. And we would, we're working towards a comprehensive wellness program that will feature injury prevention, fitness, and nutrition. All of our members look forward to a productive 2011, and we're going to, all of us, continue to serve the city of Evanston with distinction, professionalism, and pride. So having given you my report, there's a lot of other information in there. I won't go over everything. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or I can go right into the ISO report.
Sorry, I don't see any lights, so go ahead.
Okay. Onto the good news I was referring to earlier. Last year, the insurance, here's what I'm going to do with this report, because I want to make sure everybody understands what this is and what it means for our community. So I'm going to explain what ISO is, and how does ISO evaluate a community, and how will ISO's rating change affect the city of Evanston and our fire department. ISO stands for Insurance Services Office. They evaluated Evanston Fire Department's fire suppression capabilities last year. ISO is an independent company that serves insurance companies, communities, fire departments, insurance regulators, and others by providing insurance about fire risk. ISO analyzes data using their fire suppression rating system, and then assigns a public protection classification, PPC, to the community. They assign a PPC or a public protection classification from 1 to 10. Class 1 represents exemplary public protection, and Class 10 indicates that the area's suppression program doesn't meet the minimum criteria that they've set. As fire chief, I'm proud to announce that our PPC rating has improved from a previous rating of 3 to a rating of 2. This is a tremendous accomplishment for our city and the department. The public protection classification program assesses a community's capability or ability to suppress fires, and those ratings directly affect property insurance values. Virtually all U.S. insurers of home and business property use ISO's PPC program to assess property insurance policies. That's because statistical data on insurance losses demonstrates the relationship between better fire protection, as measured by their PPC program, and lower fire losses. So how does ISO evaluate a community? ISO's PPC program evaluates communities according to a uniform set of standards and criteria that are developed by the National Fire Protection Administration or Association and the American Water Works Association. They're evaluated in three categories, in three areas. The strength of its fire department, number one, water supply, number two, and fire alarm and communication systems is the third. 50% of the overall grading is based on a fire department's first alarm response and initial attack to minimize fire loss from, to minimize loss from fire structures, from structure fires, sorry. ISO reviews staffing, staffing levels, the distribution of fire stations, engine companies, truck companies, equipment carried, pumping capacity, reserve apparatus, and firefighting, firefighter training. 40% of the overall grading is based on the community's water supply. ISO reviews the condition and maintenance of hydrants, the availability of, the available water supply against the amount needed to suppress fires. ISO also assesses all components of a water supply system, including pumps, storage, filtration, and even observes fire flow tests at various community locations to determine the rate of flow the water mains provide. 10% of the overall grading is based on how emergency communications centers receives and dispatches fire alarms to fire departments. ISO evaluates staffing, dispatching systems, and the number of available telephone lines to handle emergency calls received the communications center. So, what does an improved PPC or a public protection classification rating mean for us here in Evanston in our department? ISO's evaluated nearly 45,000 protection areas in the United States and 2,500 in the state of Illinois. Evanston's piece, as I mentioned earlier, our public protection classification is now classified as 2. Evanston now ranks in the top 1.3% of communities nationally and in the top 2.4% in the state of Illinois. There are only 62 departments out of 2,500 rated communities in Illinois with the ISO rating of 2 or higher. This is a huge deal. A community's investment in fire mitigation is a proven and reliable predictor of future fire losses. Data on insurance losses bears out the relationship between excellent fire protection, as measured by their PPC program, and low fire losses. In general, the price of fire insurance in a community with a good PPC is substantially lower than in a community with a poor public protection classification, assuming all other factors are equal. Fire departments around the country who've had a PPC rating improvement similar to ours from 3 to 2 have seen a 6% to 10% reduction in insurance premiums for homeowners and businesses. ISO statistics show that per $1,000 of insured property, communities with poor PPC ratings have fire losses two or more times as high as communities with the best ratings. We should all be proud of this accomplishment for our city and for our department. A tremendous amount of work was done over the last year to prepare for this. Members of the, our water department, public works, communications staff, all contributed to this. This was a coordinated effort, so I'd like to thank all those departments for their assistance. We also had some members of our own department that really stepped up and prepared this, and some former members of our department, so I'd like to bring those names out. Former Chief Alan Berkowski, former division chief, retired, Ron Gannon, current members of our department as well. Division Chief Tom Janetski and our members of our Fire Prevention Bureau did a lot of work behind this. Mike Whalen, our management analyst. And finally, Captain Bill Munro. He may be here, he may not. I heard our guys go out, so he's on duty tonight, but Bill did a heck of a job preparing this, and he deserves a lot of credit for this. This was, this again, was a tremendous accomplishment. I'm very proud of our department, our city, and this is, this is a rating that I think we should all be proud of. So thank you very much.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Kleiber. Thank you to your staff and everyone who helped put all this together. We all know that Evanston's Fire and Life Safety Department is the best, and it's always good to know from an independent outside evaluator that Evanston's Fire and Life Safety Department is the best. There's no one else you want on the job, in our men and women, for sure.
I concur.
My question is, did something change? Did we do something differently in the last year that bumped our rating up to a 2? Do you get a written evaluation from ISO that tells you what accounts for the improved rating, and can you share that with us?
We've really improved in all three areas from, they're supposed to, we're supposed, department's supposed to be evaluated roughly once every 10 years, and it actually, it's been quite some time, 18, I think, 18 or 19 years since the last time we were evaluated. So over the course of that period of time, we've improved in all three areas. Communications, how we receive, how we send out, dispatch our calls, water in the area of, and a lot of it has to do with, within our own department as well, records and training and how we, you know, analyze, keep, keep, our training, our training has improved tremendously, and that's, that really helped us this time around.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief. That's a tremendous accomplishment to have the rating improve, so that's wonderful for you and for all the citizens in Evanston.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Believe it or not, tomorrow is March the 1st, 3-1-1-1, and it will be the launch of our new 3-1-1 service. Mr. McCray is here to say one last report before we go live. Tomorrow, we have a press conference scheduled at 3:11 PM to formally get this started. Mr. McCray.
Madam Mayor, city council, city clerk, good evening. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you one more time. I'm sure this will not be the last time, but as Wally, our city manager, said, tomorrow marks the beginning of 3-1-1. Our full-service customer service call center will be accessible for all non-emergency service calls and service requests and information requests effective 7:00 AM tomorrow. So we are gearing up and getting ready to go. I had my implementation team here with me. I actually sent them home so that they could be ready at 6:30 AM tomorrow, but I want to thank them, and I'm not going to go into names at this point. We all have time to do that at the press conference tomorrow.
Go ahead.
Yeah, a second. There are a number of people that deserve a lot of thanks for this project, and number one, I want to thank the city manager, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for entrusting me with this responsibility. It's been a big year for me personally and for the city, and I feel like this project is going to fundamentally change the way the city of Evanston does business. I think we're going to improve the customer service experience for residents, visitors, and businesses, and I think you all will be impressed with the, with the product that you are able to partake in tomorrow. In addition, there were, there was input from all of our city departments, and I can't thank you all enough for your input and for your continued support of this project. There was an implementation team that met, we met every Monday from March, this time, almost from this time last year, beginning the middle of March last year to now, and we went on tours of other call centers. We did extensive research throughout the country and planned this piece and then implemented that plan, and now here we are. So I want to thank, if I could, Carol Davenport, Amanda Alt, Jonathan Majarsik, Adalita Hernandez, Eric Palmer, Erica Storley, Pandora Pratt, Sue Pontorelli, Chief Eddington, Chief Jamraz, Deputy Chief Wheatland, Deputy Chief Jamraz, I'm sorry, Stephanie Levin and John Devaney specifically, and I know there are many, many others who participated in this project, but without the help of that talented team of staff, I don't know where this project would be. We're excited about what this project will be. We encourage residents to visit our website, www.cityovevanson.org/311. Tomorrow, we encourage residents to call 3-1-1 for all their non-emergency needs. One caveat, if you call 3-1-1 and it isn't available for your particular carrier, we're expecting all carriers to come onboard pretty much this month. Most will be onboard tomorrow, but if by some chance that's not the case for your particular carrier, I need you to call 847-448-4311. That's the 10-digit number for 3-1-1. If you're outside the geographic city limits of Evanston and you want to call our 3-1-1 call center, you need to call that number. Again, that number is 847-448-4311. We look forward to tomorrow.
Just a word about Mr. McCray. As I know many of you have heard me say many times, he's our number-one guy, and I asked him to take on this project really without any knowledge or really good understanding, I think, of what he was really getting himself into, but he saluted smartly and said that this is what needs to be done, this is what we'll do, and he's done an outstanding job. So Joe, on behalf of all your colleagues here in the city, thank you. It's going to be great. Finally, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Suzette Robinson. We have all sorts of good news at the top of the meeting, and here's another piece of good news at the top of the meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Clerk Green, Alderman, and city manager. I never, I know you don't think about garbage being good news, but in this case it is. Finally, have received our shipment of new garbage carts. So we are going to start our distribution, and I just wanted to give you, it's going to take us about a month to do each route. It may be faster, but we're starting with Wednesday's route, and that will be switched over in March, and then we're going straight from Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday. And the, when we change out the carts, we're only changing one cart per address, and it will be the city-issue cart. So if you have multiple carts, in order to get replacements for those multiple carts, you would actually have to pay for a new cart like you paid for the additional carts that you may have. So we're going to take the worst of the worst, and if you got a new cart within the last year, you won't get another new cart, meaning if you have the new style cart, which I didn't bring with me, but it's out here in the, no, I did bring it. It's out there. It is out there, but I didn't wheel it in, so.
Go get it.
Okay. Just so you can see what it looks like. There's no such thing, so. There are things you can do to, you know, prevent squirrels from chewing on your can, like, you know, not putting it up against the fence or underneath the tree, and closing the top and packing the, well, you know, they go to the path of least resistance. So there's the new cart. Ooh.
Well, Ploto, come on, Marty, open it up. Show them.
[laughing].
Now, if you're a squirrel, how would you get in?
How would you get out?
How would you get out?
Okay. Let's, thank you. Thank you very much.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one. Just to let everyone know out there that vital records have moved up to the city clerk's office. We're not vital records, but they're sharing the office with us, so the city clerk's office will be open for business from 8:30 to 5:00 o'clock from now on. We will not have a one-hour break like we had before. So the city vital records department will be starting the business tomorrow from the clerk's office, room 1200 in the Lorraine Morton Civic Center. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. If you would come up as I call your name, and you each have three minutes, and please give your address as well. The first four speakers are Elizabeth Kinney, Padmoreo, Jeff Smith, and Nicholas Shuspo. My apologies for whoever's name I mangled.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Elizabeth Kinney. I live at 1024 Brummel Street. I've been a resident of Evanston for over 20 years, and I'm here tonight to urge the city council to direct the city manager to consult with the city's appointed boards and commissions prior to taking or recommending action on matters within their area of expertise. An example that I am aware of where this did not occur is a recent proposal by the city staff to amend the green building ordinance. The environment board and members of the city's green building committee received notice of the proposed changes in the green building ordinance, which were scheduled for introduction at the February 14th city council meeting on Thursday, February 10th. That is not sufficient time for meaningful participation in the development of policy recommendations. While the committee did meet after the fact on Wednesday, February 23rd, in my view, the city staff should have consulted the environment board and other interested groups before the proposed changes in the green building ordinance were submitted to the city council. If permitted to do so, Evanston residents can make significant contributions to the development of city policies. In fact, the charge of the environment board is to develop policy recommendations on environmental issues for the city council. When the appropriate boards or commissions are ignored by city staff and/or the city council, residents are discouraged from providing their insight and knowledge to the city on such matters. One of the joys of living in Evanston is the vibrant civic participation of its residents. Please do not Please do not discourage such participation by failing to consult with the appropriate boards and commissions in advance of entertaining either changes in existing policy or developing new policies. Thank you for your consideration of my views.
Good evening. My name is Padmoreo. I live at 2246 Sherman Avenue. I sent by email a letter to the council. I hope everyone received it, and if not, I believe Mr. Bakvitz was kind enough to distribute a hard copy. I tried to be thorough and provide some citations to authorities, which I don't have to go over verbally. I'm talking about the Kendall re-subdivision proposal, and there's an issue, a number of issues, one of which is a failure to provide complete information before the commissions and committees thus far. And the remedy for this is to basically start over. The council should not be deprived of the assistance and expertise of its commissions and committees, nor should the council have to reproduce the work that could have been done at those levels. Public discussion of all of the issues is more efficiently performed before the commissions and committees without having to interfere with the council's heavy workload. In terms of procedural due process, it's not enough to simply say, "We conducted a hearing." The commissions and committees need to be given full information and must know all of the consequences of the proposal if their recommendations are to be useful to the council. The public must also know what's at stake in order to decide how to proceed, to present reasonable alternatives, and to proceed intelligently in the matter. The city has the power of zoning in order to accomplish certain public interests and to preserve public safety, and this power limits private property rights. When the council decides on a re-subdivision, it's not merely a ministerial act, but it requires judgment and deliberation. Among the powers of zoning or the interests of zoning that are involved, mature trees do play a role. They provide pure air, they enhance the taxable value of land, and among the oldest trees, they are natural features of historic and aesthetic importance. And for all of these reasons, it makes sense to protect those mature trees. A good question was asked at the planning and development meeting the last time, which has to do with the proposed dedication of the alleys to the city. And the question is basically, what does the city get out of it? And I don't think that the proposed alley dedication will benefit the city. The configuration of the proposed alley raises some concerns about traffic safety because it pushes a lot of the traffic onto the smaller, quieter roads. The alley dedication itself will end up imposing liabilities on the city in terms of maintenance costs as well as legal liabilities. I would request this council to send this matter back to the commissions and committees to allow for public discussion and recommendations based on full information. Please do not sacrifice the mature trees because they are an irreplaceable part of our history and an important part of our ecosystem. Thank you.
Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. I'm speaking on P. 7, the proposed amendment to the green building ordinance. After this came up at council last time, there was a board meeting of citizens green of Evanston, and a strong consensus, indeed, I believe the unanimous feeling, was that we should not retreat from the 10,000-square-foot threshold for requiring new construction to be silver lead. There was subsequently a meeting that involved a number of representatives of the environmental community as well as city staff and other stakeholders, and a compromise proposal was worked out whereby a list of 15 items would have to be met rather than silver lead for the 10,000 to 20,000-square-foot range. While this hasn't had a chance to come before the board, and some of us, myself included, would prefer to see no retreat whatsoever, I would not throw myself in front of a bus for that distinction. However, I would strongly oppose, and I suggest that the environmental community would strongly oppose, any further retreat from a compromise that was worked out, albeit in only two hours last week. And what we need to stress here, I think, is why we're looking at sustainability at all, and to remember that this is not just some kind of fad. This is not like Evanston saying, "We're going to require you to build art deco or in a Victorian style." We build green because not building green has real costs, not just for Evanston but for society. Right now, 40% of U.S. energy is consumed by buildings. That's 10% of energy in the world. When a building doesn't build in something such as gray water or permeable parking lot, where's its water going? Into the sewer system, whether it's the waste sewer system or the combined sewer system. And the largest electrical consumer in Cook County is the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So for a building not to build green is dispersing its costs onto taxpayers and other residents, even if it's not the people directly in the neighborhood. A sustainable planet is not a nice-to-have. To not build sustainable is not sustainable. When developers or retailers are coming to us and saying, "Well, we want to buy this, but we can't afford to do it," they're not factoring in the cost of doing what they need to do. When somebody says, "We can't afford to build green," we have to be telling them, "We can't afford for you not to." Evanston could be and should be branding itself as a beacon of environmental responsibility, seeking out and attracting the businesses that want to be here because they're green and that want to be in a community that wants them because they want to be green. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Nicolai Schuspo. I live at 1139 Elmwood in Evanston. I want to follow up what Elizabeth said about the process that was followed here. I think we're all feel a bit awkward that this decision is being rushed on very short notice. And I think that the next time this sort of issue comes up as far ahead of time, it can be brought forth to all the organizations that were involved in the drafting of the original amendment, the better off we're going to be. We may end up with the same result, but I think that this process has been abridged to the point where it's very difficult. The decision you make tonight is not just for the here and now, but rather impacting the quality of building stock that your children will inherit long after you are no longer on the council. Please support the approval of the amended requirement that allows compliance with the Evanston green building ordinance to be achieved by employing 15 of the measures from the Evanston Sustainable Building Measures for interior renovation for buildings between 10,000 and 20,000 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speakers are Mike Brennan, Andrew Irwin, Len Skiarra, and Nate Kipnis. After Mike is Andrew Irwin.
Hi. Andrew Irwin, 2008 Keeney Street. I've lived in Evanston for 20 years. Two of those were in Virginia, so I just want to echo the statements by Jeff and Nicolai. I think this is a really good plan, and I think that we need to stay in line with the green vision in the strategic plan that says Evanston will be known as "The" Green City. We will embrace the best ecological practices and policies in our government services and infrastructure. Item 1 says, "More open green space and LEED certification required for all commercial developments." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Len Skiarra, former chair of the environment board, 3003 Park Place. So I'm here to also speak in favor of the compromise position that the environment board drafted with city staff. I'm going to get a little technical here. So the plan, when we originally came forward with the green building ordinance, we realized that LEED wasn't for all projects in all places at all times. And so we came up with this, the EBSMIR list, which isn't the greatest name. And it's a list of sort of practical, sustainable strategies that anyone could deploy that were easily verifiable. It could be on the blueprints, it could be on the permit drawings, it wouldn't require sort of a huge infrastructure to enforce, and they're all off-the-shelf technologies. Just as one of the ones I'll talk about was the envelope provisions, which the envelope is being the walls and the windows. And so we have one of the requirements there is to be around 17% more efficient, which is sort of a miss, it's just efficient being, and a wall isn't efficient, it's just better. So 17% better than a typical wall. So currently, the code requires R11 rigid insulation, so that's like blue board or styrofoam, like a styrofoam cup. So R11, and that's about an inch and a half of insulation on your wall. And in commercial buildings, that's pretty typical, and that's the code. So to be 17% better than that, you're requiring just another quarter inch of rigid insulation on your building. So the guys are already putting up rigid insulation. Instead of just buying one type of board, they have to buy another type of board. And it's not that much thicker, a quarter inch, not a big deal. So the kind of stuff we're talking about is really not, on the EBSMIR list, is not sort of these radical, you know, we're going to put wind turbines and PVs everywhere. It's just pretty basic stuff. So that's kind of, just wants you guys a perspective there. It's pretty, it's not, I don't think it's overly stringent, our compromise list.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nate Kipnis, 1642 Payne Street. And Len, what's wrong with wind turbines, by the way?
Thank you for including that.
I was at both of the meetings last week, and, you know, it was, I wasn't at very many of the original two years of work that was involved in this, but I was put into the four hours to figure this out, and it was a very unfortunate position to be in. I met with the developer about that Evanston Sustainable Building Measures, and 15 items is not a difficult threshold, but it is a good threshold. It's a good compromise that maintains high-quality, verifiable standards that are attainable. You know, the goal of this is not to make this easy for a developer. The goal is to push this a bit. And so these things do that, but again, they're attainable. You know, when I was talking to the developer, they stated to me that their wall system did not have a lot of insulation, which was kind of surprising. They said they had a lot of insulation in the ceiling and a lot in the floor. And the comment I made to some people afterwards was, "It's like having a good hat and good shoes and no coat on." And it really doesn't work that way. You need to have a building that's a system. It has to be a complete envelope. And, you know, having the developer rethink this wall system, as Len pointed out, I don't think is that difficult. And apparently, they do many of these stores, and they're going to continue to do stores. And I think for them to rethink this wall system will not only be good for Evanston, not only be good for that store, for their bottom line, but also for their stores moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Drina Nicola, Joel Freeman, Kevin O'Connor, and Mike Vasilko.
Hi, my name's Drina Nicola. I'm at 2008 Keeney Street, and I've lived in Evanston since 1990. I actively participated on Evanston's Energy Future, working on drafting the original ordinance for several years. We went back and forth with the city, with the environment board, to draft that, negotiating the fine lines of the ordinance, you know, whether it was going to be a threshold of 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet. There was a lot of conversations around that, three years. So for me to open up the paper and find out in the newspaper that there is a possibility of this ordinance to be crumbled on the first pass was shocking to me. When we were drafting it, it was a very conservative process. We looked at benchmarking against cities across the country because, again, Evanston was saying we wanted to be green. We looked at Berkeley, Chicago, Austin, San Francisco. We dug out what other cities had been doing for years. At the same breath, we were trying to say, "We're progressive." I was thinking, "We are behind the times." So now we're taking that backwards if we start to crumble the tooth of the ordinance that has been developed. So I encourage you to stay strong and support the efforts of the citizens and the vision of the strategic plan. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joel Freeman. I live at 2151 Hartree in Evanston. I've lived there since 1991. The people who have spoken on item P. 7 about the upcoming amendment to the green building ordinance are all people I've known and have worked with at various aspects of sustainable approaches, energy conservation, and the green building ordinance. Much of my professional engineering work deals with existing buildings, and existing buildings have new directives to say, "Let's be sustainable, let's save energy," and they have to struggle to do that because the building that was built for them wasn't built to the standards that we aspire to today. It costs a lot of money to upgrade. It's a lot of disruption to the occupants in order to carry out the things that can be done. It's much more costly, excuse me, it's much more costly to upgrade what would have been easy to include during the initial construction. Also, from my professional experience, owner-occupied buildings tend to be built better because the owners have a long-term stake in what that building's going to do for them. They're going to live there, they have to inherit whatever is incorporated in there, they pay the energy bills. And as opposed to a developer, which is really part of the intent of a lot of building codes, a developer can build the building, when he's done selling it, he doesn't care what happens down the road in terms of operating costs. Owner-occupied buildings tend to. And I think the proposed building on Oakton Street is going to be owner-occupied, and I think they have a corporate policy to address many sustainable issues. I think it would be good if they were to kind of further their cause and not seek waivers around the green building ordinance as has been proposed. The industry of green buildings or green building approaches has increased dramatically over recent years, and the industry forecasters say it will continue. And since the green building ordinance, the building industry has also been developing green building codes, and they don't necessarily include LEED, but they are specifically designed to be adoptable by code officials in order to further this cause and have it be something that the authorities having jurisdiction can really hang their hat on. And I think that's our future. There's codes being worked on right now, and most of them have been developed since Evanston adopted the green building ordinance, and I think that's our future, and I hope you'll sustain the green building ordinance in the form that's been discussed. Thank you.
Little different perch over here on the right. Good evening, Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half Isabella. I'd like to thank the council for giving the library board control of the library tax levy, thus avoiding a likely lawsuit. I'd also like to condemn this council for not increasing the funding for the library in the current budget, resulting in the closure of the South Branch after 91 years. What a wonderful political feeling that must be. Ironically and painfully, at the same time the mayoral political appointees were saying that there wasn't $57,000 to staff and partner with the EPLF at the new 900 Chicago Avenue location, the Economic Development Committee was giving $42,000 in tax dollars to private businesses for facade improvement. We have $6 million to spend in the Economic Development Fund, $331,000 in our city manager's contingency fund unspent, while the council raises property taxes 3% and finds new ways to nickel-and-dime the tax-paying citizens. New union employees for the unnecessary 3-1-1 system have been hired when we can't afford the union employees we already have. Where are our priorities? The city is asking for more volunteers to help. However, if volunteering is for a citizen-generated idea, i.e. the branch libraries, one can expect our elected officials and some of their political appointees to be non-receptive. Many have asked Many have asked about not having a West Side Branch Library. I would add, also, why was there no West Side TIFF until 2005? The councils obviously didn't care enough to act when necessary. Is the old political axiom being changed from a chicken in every pot to a literacy in every ward? If police cameras are force multipliers, aren't branch libraries literacy multipliers? Who will take responsibility for the tragic state of the city? The silence is deafening. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Fasilko. I live at 2728 Reese. I just have a couple of quick comments, I hope. I didn't get here early enough tonight to the APW meeting to hear your discussion about items A4 and A5. I'm a big fan of raising revenue, obviously, but it strikes me that that particular ordinance, or the proposal, is pretty loosely defined at this point. I don't see what the limitations are for what kind of advertisement can or can't be done. It'd be helpful if we had some examples of what's an approved sign and what approved advertisements that could be sold to whoever. There's no real description of what's acceptable or not. Curious about how this could change the character of downtown. Somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but the way it reads, if you just read it verbatim, if, you know, if somebody came to you with 900, I'm sorry, $99,999 over five years, that's less than $20,000 a year, you know, they could rename the Civic Center to Jimmy John's Civic Center or something. So it just seems like there's, there needs to be a little bit more, hopefully it'll be more restrictive criteria built into the proposal, so that there's no environmental ISOs. And just quickly, on this issue of the environmental code, I can tell you that, because I do this for a living, 10 years ago, there would be, I think, a legitimate argument that the cost of going for a LEED certification was an expensive burden to bear. 10 years later, today, most of the materials you can buy are very easily specified. I think Energy Star goes well out of its way to recommend certain equipment and materials that are very affordable. I guess the most expensive part of it is the LEED, you know, the formal LEED certification, and if that can be waived in certain cases, but the criteria is held, I think you'd be meeting everybody at a good point. So, just my two cents on that. I support the green ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Rizki.
Good evening. First, I'll speak to Yard Waste Ordinance A9, people putting their yard waste in the street. I would like to understand how the city will enforce the ordinance. The ordinance states an accumulation of waste is a violation. Given all the parkway trees, the leaves will accumulate. The city has also cut back on street sweeping, too, and the leaves are accumulating. To me, the ordinance is really a cover-up, basically for the fact the city underestimated the sale of yard waste stickers by hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think around 700. Maybe some think the new fines will make up for this. It really translates into 1.5% property tax increase. Frankly, we need to eliminate some things here, so city workers can pick up the leaves and maybe plow our sidewalks like Womet. In Womet, they do not do recycling or pick up the trash. Item A3.3, buying a new recycling vehicle. I would like to know if that cost was figured into the, what I consider a highly questionable cost savings, when we flip-flopped the trash and recycling. If we had privatized everything, we would not be buying this vehicle, and for several hundred thousand dollars right now. And let's talk about the LEED ordinance, P7. My comment, it should be a bonus versus a negative. Applicants should not have the option to basically, the cost of the consultant and the LEED fees should be a deduction from the city permit fees. Since the council is very likely to scale this back, similar to its non-enforcement of the Three Non-Related People Living Together ordinance, let me make a suggestion. I suggest we eliminate the Sustainability Coordinator position. Reductions, really, in Evanston's carbon footprint have been negligible. I typically do not make statements about employees, but I think Ms. Hurley's credentials were discussed here, and I would like to make a suggestion.
Mr. Rizki, that's really not appropriate for public comments.
All right, I'll make, continue on. My suggestion, basically, is we need to have somebody in a position to manage the capital. There is no management of the capital here. The capital projects are really in disarray, the financials are in disarray, and the technical issues are marginal. It's really pretty bad. At the last meeting, the council approved several million dollars of capital with little discussion and really little explanation from the staff that made any sense. So, basically, I found it interesting that we have a garage, the council basically said they're ground off the concrete and we're fixing it, or we have a stairway out here that nobody approved capital for, and we took it off the building. And frankly, if you don't think you have problems, the roof of the Civic Center now is losing shingles. So if the staff wants to explain, "Why is the roof shingles coming off here?", I'd like to hear that. So, that's my comment. But you need somebody to run your capital plan, because you're not running it.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 14. The Administration and Public Works Committee asks your approval for the City of Evanston payroll through February 13 in the amount of $2,522,639.35. Item A2, we ask your approval also of the City of Evanston bills through February 27 in the amount of $2,212,467.23. Administration and Public Works recommends approval of the lowest responsive and responsible bid for watercraft maintenance and repair services to Full Throttle Marine in the amount of $31,860 for the period of April 15 through April 14, 2012. This includes service to seven pieces of watercraft equipment. Item A3.2, we request your pre-approval of repair expenses associated with the biannual inspection overhaul and required repairs for Street Sweeper 667 in an amount not to exceed $24,000 from Standard Equipment Company. This is a single-source service provider for this location for all Elgin Pelican products. The estimate of the repair work that's going to be needed is $21,829.37. We ask your approval of a recycling collection vehicle purchase in the amount of $153,170 from Trans Chicago Truck Group. This is through a state bid. Funding will be provided from two sources. One, the fleet capital budget will offer up $98,170, with the remaining $55,000 provided for a grant from the Illinois Recycling Grants Program through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We ask your approval for the main library chiller replacement project to award to International Piping Systems, the amount of $258,300 for the installation of a new chilling system. This was the lowest responsible bidder of three bidders. Approval is requested also to renew the annual sole source maintenance and support agreement for the term of March 1, 2011 through February 28, 2012, with Oracle Corporation for the city's integrated resource information system that you know as IRIS Software, in the amount of $140,800. Payments are made quarterly in four equal payments of $35,200. Administration and Public Works requests your approval of the Brummel Richmond Tot Lot renovation project to the responsible and responsive bidder, Claus Brothers, in the amount of $234,180. This project will include the complete renovation of the existing park and playground located at the corner of Brummel and Richmond. Next, we ask up A4, approval of a policy for sponsorship and advertising is off the consent agenda, as is A5, which approves the City of Evanston Advertising Pilot Project. This will be discussed by the committee chair. A6, the committee requests your approval of Resolution 6R11, which authorized, I think I should take, should I take this off, too? All right, I'm gonna take the Noise Center Arts leases off the consent agenda. Next, Resolution 12R11, we request your approval, by which the council would authorize the payments relating to the FY 2011 Capital Improvement Plan, known as the CIP. Project expenditures up to $10 million be reimbursed by the subsequent 2011 general obligation bond issuance. Total project costs to be funded from this bond issue are equal to $9,693,500. We ask your approval for a short-term interfund loan of $4 million from the Parking Fund to the Sewer Fund. This short-term loan is a temporary substitute for the GO bonds approved to be issued in 2011 per the October 2010 sewer system report. In order to, this is being done in order to save on debt issuance costs, the GO bonds to fund sewer operations will be combined with the total 2011 capital improvement GO bond issue scheduled for the spring of 2011. Next item is off the consent agenda. This has to do with Ordinance 8011, and will be addressed by the committee chair. Also off is the Leaf Blower Ordinance, Ordinance 9011. That will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is Ordinance 15011. We request your approval of amending the Civil Service Commission rules. This is being given for introduction under the consent agenda. The committee chair will address this regarding suspending the rules. Next is Planning and Development. The first item is, that we request your approval for, is the Interfaith Housing Center of the Northern Suburbs grant renewal for $25,000 for continuation of their good work of the Evanston Foreclosure Prevention Program. The renewed grant will run from February 1, 2011 through January 31, 2012. The committee asks your approval for the renewal of the federally required homeless management information system, HMIS, grant in the amount of $11,000. The grant period is January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2011. This is from the Affordable Housing Fund, and the city has provided this matching grant from this fund for the last four years totaling $43,070. Next item is off the agenda, and that has to do with the removal of Pond Broker as an allowable use in C1. There are some adjustments to be made to the ordinance by the committee chair. Next is Res, or, should I, should I introduce P3? No, you need to explain that. P4 is off the consent agenda and has to do with the subdivision of Orington, the former Kendall College site. Also off is the alley issue having to do with Kendall. That's off the consent agenda. Next item is extending the date by 90 days that a building permit must be obtained for 1200 Davis Street by Royce Moore School. The committee recommends your approval of this and will extend the deadline to June 1, 2011, as opposed to March 1. Next item is the Green Building Ordinance item, and that is off the consent agenda. Next, the mayor asks your approval for the appointments of the following boards and members. The Environment Board, Lori Zoloff; Housing Commission, Reed Hellingan; Housing Commission, Omar Corey; and the Utility Commission's, the former 8th Ward Alderman and Executive Director of the Water Reclamation District, Richard Lanyon. Final, Madam Mayor, the Special Order of Business is off the consent agenda. I move, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Patiss?
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Alderman Holmes, Administration and Public Works, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A4, I'd like to move approval of policies for sponsorship and advertising.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve policies and sponsorship and advertising. Is there any discussion?
You have a light.
Oh, now I have a light. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke at committee on this and would suggest that, looks like page 2 out of 6 of the recommended policy has to limitations that list entities that are not eligible for advertising or marketing partnership opportunities within the City of Evanston, that we include businesses that are, as, not eligible for exemption, are not eligible for participating as businesses that are not otherwise permitted by our city code for operating within the City of Evanston. The reason is, is that I am uncomfortable with, I'm looking for the reference right now, more general statements about, are being guided by what community standards are for what's appropriate advertising, what types of businesses we would want to advertise here. I think a reference specifically to the city code, which is a statement of our community standards for the types of businesses we want in Evanston, would be perhaps a good thing to include in this policy.
And I think, and I think, Madam Mayor, that as we get on to A5, that the city manager had explained to us that this, we first need to investigate what this advertising would be like. The sponsorship would remain in-house, but we needed to look maybe at a third party in terms of the advertising.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I voted against this in committee. My reasoning was that I felt that it was taking really two steps forward when one step was more appropriate, and that we probably should be reaching out to the community to identify sponsorships within the community for, especially for our public places. Recently, there have been, there's been significant interest in memorializing some public places, and I just feel that the community should be made aware of the opportunity before we actually go out to look for advertising from businesses and commercial entities.
Seeing no more lights. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the policy for sponsorship and advertising. Do you want to, does anyone want to amend?
It's a policy, I'm not sure it requires amendment.
Okay.
My suggestions can perhaps be incorporated if appropriate.
Yes, we talked about that.
Okay.
Yes, we'll be happy to incorporate it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
I would move approval of the City of Evanston Advertising Pilot Project.
Second.
Alderman Fisk?
To repeat myself, I also voted against this in committee. My concern is that we are opening up some of our most precious resources along the lakefront and also our historic Fountain Square to possible commercial advertising, and I just really do not think that, at this time, that's appropriate.
Alderman Nguyen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have objections to the types of sites that are being described here for advertising. The lakefront issues and the Fountain Square, I don't have as much concern about our parking garage, but, and recycling and trash receptacles, but at a time when our lives are so cluttered with unwanted messages and advertising, you can't buy groceries at the grocery store without being assaulted by television advertising. I don't, well, I appreciate the idea of sponsorships. I really, really find it objectionable that we would coat our city assets with advertising. So I will be voting against this.
Alderman Wilson.
I guess basically the same comments. I don't think I would have as much of a problem if we just simply didn't run through the list here, but for example, the lakefront, a lot of effort went into coming up with a building and a beach house that is beautiful and incorporates the environment, and we don't really know what the signage, beach house on-building signage, things of that nature. So I can't really be on board with these listed assets either.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I have an idea. Why don't we eliminate the objectionable locations and at least see if this program could work, say at all, just be very specific, at our public parking garages, on trash cans, maybe, things like that.
Bus stops.
I agree, bus, well, we're going to talk about bus shelters, yeah. I mean, I would hate to see this program die, but I agree with you about the lakefront and Fountain Square. That should not be included. So perhaps the manager can save the day here and come up with a suggestion to avoid considering those locations.
City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think we have proposed these areas because we want, we think they stand the best likelihood of having at least some interest, and I would ask the council's understanding to at least allow us to take a next step to see what kind of interest there is. If we can find a third party that would act as our agent with us, I think that that would then at least give us the opportunity to mix and match at that point. Nothing is being approved here this evening other than to pursue this. So if Alderman Rainey, you believe it's more appropriate to eliminate items, my concern is that there'll be no critical mass whatsoever in order to do this, and that might very well make it difficult, if not impossible, to move forward.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that, you know, once again, we are making the lakefront sacrosanct, you know, sort of out of bounds, not within reach of anything that is not standard conservative use. City Manager is asking for the opportunity to explore the options, and earlier you talked about perhaps the lifeguard stand and other kinds of advertisement that's not so intrusive and, you know, that would characterize the entire lakefront. When we talked about the Fountain Square, I mean, when we talk about the historic Fountain Square, Fountain Square still has no redeeming value. I mean, none of us even go there to try to, as a destination, to do anything. It's there, it has, no, do you? Other than some of the events that the city organizes, it's not a place that attract, when we talk about, it's, you know, what are the values that we have there that will be impeded by some advertisement? And what kind of advertisement are we talking about? So I think City Manager, you should try to go into the specifics so we understand what is being proposed, because the, if you don't go into the specific, then the images that we may conjure up in our minds would be all kinds of, you know, crazy advertisement and, you know, plastered all over the place. I think you had some limitations, you had a vision. Please share it.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Jean Baptiste, there's a critical quality of life issue here. There is not every community in Illinois coming before city councils and saying, let's go advertise on things. I understand that. I also understand that we continue to face multimillion-dollar deficits as we move forward, and I think you charged me to come up with alternatives to taxes, and I think that this is a viable alternative. What exactly is the why and where for? What exactly does something like this look like? We're not exactly sure. I'm not even sure that there's a market for this. And as Alderman Jean Baptiste, if you look at the staff report, we're talking about beach house naming rights, beach house on-building signage, lifeguard stand signage, lakefront trail marker, mile marker signage, and then the downtown recycling trash receptacles, digital information kiosks at multiple locations, including Fountain Square, parking garage vacant storefront, advertising and parking garage deck signage. What I'd like to try to do is see if there is a market for this. If there is a market for this, then find a partner who knows more about it than we do to investigate it, then come back to the council with options. I think there's a fair likelihood that many of these things will not pass the quality of life test. However, I don't feel that I'm in a position to not bring these ideas forward because I'm assuming what the solution will be three steps down the checkerboard. So I'm asking that the council at least allow us to move forward, to investigate. If we can come up with something that makes sense for Evanston, great. If we can't, we won't, and we'll look to other ideas. We are, as was mentioned in committee, Mr. Woodard is working on a variety of different things with sponsorship, is working with Parks and Recreation on some of the existing programs that they have, and he will, as only one person, continue to do the best that he can. I think there's an opportunity for advertising, ways to do this properly in Evanston, but I think we need to do a little bit more work before we know what the final answer is.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I and with Alderman Jean Baptiste agree that this is really just exploratory. Going forward with an RFP commits us to nothing except for a better understanding of whether Evanston's assets have an enhanced value out there in the marketplace. The whether we decide to go forward with actual advertising and what form that takes is a different question for a different day. But today, the question is, do we simply go forward and explore this opportunity and seek out different creative revenue sources? We may be told that there is no market for City of Evanston brand, that nobody wants to play with us, but I think we have to ask the question.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
I do disagree with some of the characterizations as far as Fountain Square and the lakefront. And this isn't really a question of this being a sacred place that can't have anything change or evolve, but one of my concerns is, we haven't seen the RFP. So what I would like to propose is that we bump this schedule back by just two weeks, and rather than approve the RFP and publication of the RFP, bring it back in the two weeks and look at the RFP before it goes out, because I'm interested in seeing what that says. I want to make sure that we're fairly representing to the people who might be responding what we're expecting. If the RFP isn't to a number of our liking, what we get back isn't going to be to our liking either. So I think it'd be much more constructive to see what the RFP looks like before we distribute that and then go from there.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I think that when we're talking about advertising, that people are getting scared because they don't have a sense of what sponsorship would look like, and I think you need to have a bigger vision. How many of you have been to the Chicago Art Institute, to a gallery that was sponsored by ComEd? Did you even notice that on the plaque that you walked in on, it said ComEd? And were you offended by it? I hope not, because if we don't have those kind of sponsorships, if we do not have that philanthropic input into our community, the larger community, those assets will go away. So if you look at other cultural institutions beyond the Art Institute, if you look at the Field Museum, you want to look at Brookfield Zoo, some of the things that we hold dear to what we love about living in Chicagoland, they are sponsored. So it's not big gaudy signs. I think this can be done very aesthetically. So I think part of what we're afraid of is that we haven't looked at what it could be. So having some examples of tastefully done sponsorships, I think will be extremely helpful for us, because we do need more revenue sources. And I know there are people on council that, you know, we can't change anything about the lakefront, and it's going to be awful, and the beach house will be awful. The beach house is lovely. People have emailed me and said, oh, my gosh, it's wonderful. And I'm sure that people that even opposed it got positive feedback from their constituents as well. So I think we need to have an open mind and not immediately think we're going to have big flashing signs and big red awnings. This can be done in a very appropriate Evanstonian kind of way, and I think we need to have the ability to at least explore it.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to go forward with both of these amendments, approvals, ordinances. I think that translating from the verbal to the visual is a big step. We need to give a company, a media buyer, or somebody some basic parameters of what are, or hopefully they have a sense of what Evanston is all about anyway, but until we really get down to exploring the creative process, we don't know what this will look like. So I would say we go ahead with caution, and we are in full control here. There's no reason to be afraid of it. I think we can let the sort of creative floodgates open and see what might come through.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
I would, I would be willing to support Alderman Wilson's idea to postpone this by two weeks, did you say? To have a better sense of what the RFP would look like before I could support it. I still, I appreciate Alderman Burris's characterization of it as sponsorship, and that does make me understand things slightly differently, but I still have very serious concerns about this. So I can't support it unless we postpone the decision, as Alderman Wilson suggested, or pushing back the timeline.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'd like to ask those of you who oppose this, how rewarding would it be to see a plaque on the new building down at the lakefront that says, for example, "This building is maintained through the generosity of Commonwealth Edison"? I mean, just imagine. I mean, that would just warm your heart to see that. If you go in the Levy Center, on one of the walls in the hallway are leaves, leafs, leaves of various kinds, maple leaves, elm leaves, depending on the level of support. And, I mean, nothing could be more artistic and more pleasing than to see that wall of contributors and supporters. And so, I mean, we're not seeing flashing lights here or anything like that, and like Jane says, this is really just the beginning, just the first step. We're in full control of this.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
I think when you talk about advertising and sponsorships, you're really talking about two completely different things. A sponsorship is someone, to me, making a philanthropic contribution with some sort of recognition, and this has nothing to do, right, Crown Center, somebody's name is on the building because they've donated, Levy. These are philanthropic donations. What this is talking about is advertising and marketing, and it really doesn't have anything to do with sponsorships. I think we should include that in whatever this proposal might be, but I really would like to see what the RFP looks like, because I don't know what we're going to be asking people to do. A couple of you have suggested we're in control of this. Well, if we don't see the RFP before it goes out, we don't have control on what, over what comes back. So I really think that that's the only appropriate way to go forward. I'm not opposing anything. I voted for the, for the policy. I think it would only be responsible to know what we're sending out and to have an expectation as to what we're going to be getting back.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Just so that there will be no mistake about it, I said in the beginning that the city manager had talked about keeping sponsorship within the city and looking for a partner for the advertising, so we were well aware that there's real difference between sponsorship and advertising. So we knew that, and it's the looking for someone who has more expertise than is within our staff to help with the advertising. But again, Alderman Wilson, as his suggested, if it takes looking at the RFP to see what it's going to say, then I'm willing to wait.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Advertising, as well as sponsorship, can both come and be aesthetic. So, and you can put advertising, and actually, advertising is less permanent than, than actually a philanthropic or sponsorship. Both are for a limited time period, both are contractual in how long it's going to be up. All of that, it's very similar in, basically, it's a semantic issue in many ways. So you have to just, how you, how you do the contract. But once again, both, you don't have to say, you know, you learned this long ago, when McDonald's used to say, we're not going to come to your town unless we have these big arches, and many, many cities, you know, said, no, we won't do that. So there is compromise, and you will have the decision on what that plaque look like or what that mile marker looks like. So all I'm saying is, I just think we're being afraid of something that we, we're not fully being given the visual, I guess, demonstration, as Alderman Tindham said.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to hopefully end the conversation, I think I do understand the difference between sponsorship and advertising. I am absolutely committed to an aesthetic presence in our town, but feel that the lakefront and Fountain Square especially should be off the table for consideration. I just would encourage you to take the first step, and the first step is to reach out to the community and find out whether there is an opportunity for sponsorships within the community before reaching out to commercial advertising.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
I pass.
All right, that ends the list of speakers. It has been moved and seconded that we --
Did you, was, I think Lionel seconded the
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he seconded the motion. This motion was to
My apologies. So it's been moved and seconded to wait two weeks. Take it off.
Well, I guess, to reiterate my motion.
What is your motion?
I move that we, how would I term this?
Review.
Right, that we, that we table a matter for two weeks to allow the staff to prepare the RFP, to allow us to review the RFP before we vote on whether or not it gets sent out.
Thank you very much. That's automatic.
Ms. Aubrey's second.
Been moved and seconded, so.
Just all vote.
Do you even vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
We don't vote on it.
No, don't vote on it.
We don't vote on it.
It's a table.
Done. All right, thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, A6, Resolution 6R-11, authorizing the city manager to enter into renewal of resident artist leases for space at the Nois Cultural Arts Center.
Second.
Okay, and may I speak to that, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may.
We're not, this is, the leases include parking permits for the resident artist as well as their students, and what was discussed in committee is that those fees need to be increased, and we will be sending out
Parking fees.
The parking fees, right, for the residents, resident artists and their students. The city manager will be sending out a notice to them that the fees will change as of January 1, 2011. So we just needed to make sure that that was included.
12.
12, oh, I'm sorry, this is 11, 2012, yeah. It will go through December 31, 2011, and will increase in January of 2012.
So are you moving approval of this?
Yes, I'm moving approval, and it's been seconded.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to move approval of Resolution 6R11, authorizing the city manager to enter into renewals of resident artist leases for spaces at the Nois Cultural Arts Center. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn.
Amended.
As amended.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Has this been amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Yea, nay?
Yes.
Alderman Grover? Alderman Raymond?
Aye.
And Rainey? Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
That's nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
A nine ordinance, zero eight dash O dash eleven, amending the city code subsection eight dash five dash three D to prohibit depositing of yard race in any street alley, a public place, died for the lack of a--
Anything.
Motion. So it was removed from, oh, so I move to remove it from the agenda.
Second.
I kind of like died for the lack of an anything. I don't--
Dead silence. A nine.
Okay. We don't need to do anything.
We need to, okay. A ten ordinance, zero nine dash O dash eleven, amending Title Nine, Public Safety, Chapter Five, General Offenses, Section 23, noise prohibited in other sections of the city, co-related to landscaping services. I would move to introduce, no, you introduce--
No, that died too.
To remove from the agenda as well. It got moved and seconded. Motion not to remove it. Okay. And then la--
No, no action taken.
No action taken.
More than that.
Well, we had a discussion, this was actually moved and seconded, and we had a discussion, and then decided not to--
Remove it from the--
To remove it from the agenda.
Okay. Okay. It's, we don't need to act on it.
No. Eleven ordinance fifteen dash O dash eleven, amending the Civic Civil Service Commission rules, would move, it was been introduced.
We did.
Yeah. So I would move to suspend the rules.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The rules are suspended.
And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Could we have a, we need one more motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would move to accept it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amending the Civil Service Commission rules. City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
And now that concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Motion passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For planning and development, we'd like you to turn your attention to P three. And with P three, the basic ordinance calls for the removal of pawnbroker as an allowable use in the C one commercial district. And at the committee level, we discussed the fact that there's a second license. There's one pawn shop on Howard Street, and there was another license that was issued, but no pawn shop was ever established. So at the committee level, there was a motion to amend the ordinance to eliminate the second license altogether, and to only allow that one license to stand. So let me move to amend the ordinance to eliminate the second license establishing a pawn shop.
Second. Been moved and seconded to eliminate the second license. Seeing no lights, City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
I move approval of ordinance twenty three dash O dash eleven as amended.
Seeing no lights, no further discussion. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes? Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover? Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
Okay. For item P four, this is a request that we approve resolution thirteen dash R dash eleven, approving a plat of subdivision for twenty four zero eight Arlington Avenue, former site of Kendall College. This recommendation is referred to as, what is, the property that now has been reconstituted into nineteen single-family lots. This item was held in committee on January 24th, also held on February 28th. There have been several discussions between the Alderman of the ward and the attorney representing the owner, and legal has been involved in discussion. My understanding is that there's another request that we hold it further because of the placement, how the alley is being designed to try to save the tree. So I would, Madam Mayor, I believe that Alderman Fisk wanted to have spoken on that.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. I just want to ask Attorney Farrar to come and tell you about the negotiations.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Manager Bob Kowitz, Clerk Wayne Grant for our Corporation Council. With respect to the current status of this matter since the last council meeting, there have been further discussions and negotiations relative to the status of both the resolution and the ordinance. Part of the discussion, actually, the primary focus of the discussion in the last two weeks is focused upon the engineering of the alley. And I spoke with counsel for the developer through the balance of last week. We exchanged some engineering schematics late Friday evening. So, long story short, this matter is still evolving. I believe that there is some room for some further consideration of the engineering issues attendant to where we go from here, and that will necessarily have an impact upon the legal language. So based upon that, I think staff is currently working with the developer and the attorney for the developer. I believe the developer's attorney is in support of holding this matter over for another council meeting. And hopefully, a resolution will be mutually agreeable to both parties and serve the residents of the ward and respond to their concerns.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a nice conversation with Mr. D'Agostino this afternoon, and perhaps he could come share with us his perspective on this particular tree. I think it's important, its age and its expected lifespan. If you don't mind, Mr. D'Agostino, he has examined the tree and can report to us its condition.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Paul D'Agostino, Superintendent of Parks, Forestry and Facilities Management. I've looked at this tree numerous times, probably three times in the last two weeks. The tree is in actually very good condition. My estimate is not quite as much as one of our speakers at the last meeting of 300-plus years, but it is, in my opinion, in excess of 200 years old. So it's got a, quite a long lifespan left to go, in my opinion. And it's worth saving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'm moving to hold this at council, and also hold P five at council.
Do you want to hold it or just table it?
It can be done either way. I think a hold in this matter is still appropriate. The council rule is elastic at this point.
Do we need to vote on a hold?
Not if it's not objected to.
Okay. No one's objecting. All right. Been moved and seconded, and there are no objections.
Madam Mayor, the next item is a recommendation by staff that we pass ordinance seventeen dash O dash eleven, codifying and amending ordinance fourteen dash O dash zero nine as amended by ordinance one twenty-four dash O dash zero nine. This amendment provides for an alternate compliance with the city's goal of lead silver certification on buildings slash constructions falling under this regulation. This item was introduced at February 14th, 2011 city council meeting, with an amendment proposed to increase size of property impacted to 20,000 square feet or more. Staff also introduced, instructed to meet with community members, was also instructed to meet with community members to gain further input. And the recommendations are included in the proposed ordinance. This is for action. So I move approval.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, did you have P five removed also, as well as P four?
Well, that was--
So we're holding both?
That'll be held.
Okay. They're both, no, that's fine. City Clerk's got it. All right. All right. City Manager Bob Kowitz?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, as the agenda indicates, there was a meeting held last week with interested parties regarding this. Catherine Hurley, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator is here, and I'd like to ask her just to briefly walk through the changes that were made. What we provided to the council was a red line version of the ordinance that you had before you with those recommendations. As the council will also recall, that Alderman Rainey had made an amendment to the ordinance at the last meeting, and we have copies of that ordinance without of these changes available, if you would like them. But we thought that since there was a consensus that came out of that meeting for clarity, that we would include that revised version of the ordinance in the agenda package. So if Catherine could just briefly walk through, could you tell us what page that starts, what master page that starts on, and then walk us through from there?
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Catherine Hurley, Sustainable Programs Coordinator. As City Manager stated, we did have a meeting at the direction of council on February 23rd with representatives from the Environment Board, Citizens Green or Evanston, the previous Green Building Ordinance Committee, as well as Director Griffin and myself. The memo and the proposed amended ordinance reflect the consensus of the group that held that meeting. The highlights that are pertinent to this discussion, for the private development for commercial and multifamily buildings, for 20,000 square feet and greater, the requirement would be lead silver.
And Catherine, excuse me, maybe could you point out the page number, just so everyone is there? I believe your, the ordinance begins on page three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five.
And you're on three seventy-five with the change.
Three seventy-five, four dash twenty-five dash three is where the revised language begins. So the intention here was to not make any changes to the Green Building Ordinance with respect to city-owned or city-financed buildings. So this would only be going into effect for commercial and multifamily buildings. That's something that's important to note. So for the first bullet A, we are still retaining for 10,000 square feet and greater, we would still be requiring lead silver. For the second bullet, for all commercial multifamily buildings, 20,000 square feet or greater, we'd be requiring lead silver. Then the main addition from the meeting that was a consensus of the group was that for all commercial and multifamily buildings, 10,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet, we would require either lead silver or to employ 15 items from the Esmera measures, which stands for the Evanston Sustainable Building Measures for Interior Renovations. So as a result of the good discussion at the meeting, the staff memo and recommendation is to adopt this proposed revised ordinance, and also to have staff continue the discussions on this list, to continue to refine it, to incorporate additional measures which would apply to new construction. Because as you'll note, the checklist was originally developed for interior renovations. So there could be additional items that we may want to add.
And Madam Mayor, if I can just elaborate just a little bit, so we're as completely clear as we can be. The proposed ordinance that you had two weeks ago would have codified the ordinance, which was not done previously. That remains. Mrs. Hurley refers to the changes on page three seventy-five that make the distinction for 10,000 to 20,000. If you recall, we've now picked up a new acronym, Esmera, measures that were included for the renovation. So though, it's not something that is new, but is something that we had created for the Nettleson problem, if you recall. At the final adoption of this is what to do about renovation. You'll notice then on page three seventy-six, the alternate plan that was proposed is now completely eliminated. And then there are eliminations that are then also consistent on three seventy-seven and three seventy-eight. Three seventy-nine is restated, to make that clearer. And then as you look at page three eighty-one, you see what those standards are. From a staff perspective, we appreciate the time of our community partners in a meeting with this. This is a joint recommendation, is coming from your staff and from the group of residents that came together. This is a very difficult issue. The city council has 13 goals, one of which is implementation of the Climate Action Plan, one of which is economic development. I think it is a classic case of community standards for the city council. I think that these changes that have been agreed to by leaders of our environmental community, I think, address the realities of business today. But I think the realities of business today are going to remain different in the minds of some of our environmentalists, and they're going to be different than in the minds of some folks who wish to come to Evanston. I don't know what the right answer is. And I don't know that anyone knows what the right answer is. But it comes down to community standards. And unfortunately, it ends up on the shoulders of the city council for the decision as to what that proper balance is between economic development and being a leader in green communities. It's very difficult for us to be a leader in green communities from an economic development perspective, when there are still difficult financial times. And the harsh reality is that none of our neighbors have anything like this. And so while it's a great thing to be a leader, and certainly, I think leaving this ordinance on the books is absolutely the right thing to do, to help be a leader, the downside to being a leader sometimes is that we're not going to get everything we want. And in this case, we may not get every business that wants to come to Evanston, because they can go to Skokie, Niles, Glenview, Northbrook, Willmet, and not have any of these requirements. So, again, I think from a staff perspective, we feel comfortable with the compromise that has been done. But even with this compromise, it may not satisfy everyone who wants to come and do business in the city of Evanston. And it may be that businesses choose to locate elsewhere, because in their mind, even though many in our environmental community feel that lead silver or an equivalent is doable, they may still feel from a business perspective, they may choose to go elsewhere. And that maybe is okay.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I think, just a few comments. One of the things we've heard is that this adjustment to the ordinance is caving in because it's the first applicant that we've had for a property between 10,000 and 20,000 square feet that would fall under the ordinance. And as a matter of fact, in one year, it sends the ordinance, it is the only, it is the only applicant for anything of this size that we've had in the city of Evanston. So nothing special is being done for this candidate for building in Evanston and economic development. One of the things we thought we could pull off here was-- One of the things we thought we could pull off here was an adjustment and compromise in the green building ordinance, eliminating the need for certification and requiring compliance with fifteen of the points on appendix A. And unfortunately, the developer that we have, and the business that we have, is able to easily reach ten points. However, however, one of the, one of the conditions of the attachment A is that it's really for renovation. It wasn't for new construction. So this project, just let me explain to those of you who don't know, this project is about sixteen thousand square feet, and it's going to be built, if it were to be built. If it were to be built, it would be built at around twenty-four, twenty-four Oakton and that big pile of dirt across from Home Depot. What has come to our attention is, number one, this developer, and will get no points for the following things. This developer will get no points and has taken responsibility, were he to build, for cleaning up the slime pond behind the storage facility that is a failed retention pond that was required by the planned development for the original developer. Absolutely no credit is going to be given under the fifteen points in appendix A for that. That is a huge project, and it would be because of this developer that that slime pond gets fixed. Otherwise, what's probably going to happen is the city of Evanston is going to have to fix that, and then, you know, in some way, lean the current property owner, who by the way is, you know, been teetering on foreclosure for several years. Now, that's one thing. Second thing is, it has come to the attention of everybody interested in this property, that the property, the soil, is a disaster. Number one, there could be hazardous materials there. Number two, there is definitely rubble that should not be there. Many of us watched the steel building be demolished, and I'll tell you where that mess went. The original developer dug a great big hole and stuck that mess right in that hole, and then covered it up. So this, whoever comes along and wants to build on this property, has to excavate all that mess and remove it from the site. No points for that, no points whatsoever. No points for several other things that have to do with new construction in appendix A. But a deal's a deal, there was compliance, there was a compromise with the group that met last week, and so we're going to hold firm and rigid, and this will be, I hope, the only project we'll probably lose because of this. It seems to me that while we made this agreement, perhaps the city can come forth and help with some of the extraordinary expenses. One of the examples Jeff Smith sent to us was this Testa Products, I don't know if you read his email, but Testa Products is a retail facility, and they're going to be constructing seventy-three to ninety thousand square feet down, I think it's back-of-the-yards area, or the stockyards area, I'm not sure which. And there were glowing praises for the fact that this was going to be a very green building, I don't know, silver, platinum leaves. But what the, what we weren't told was, the city of Chicago has authorized and voted a fifteen-point-two-million-dollar bond issue to help with this project. So it's all across the country. We are one of the few cities that are requiring private developers to adhere to the green building ordinance, which means perhaps we have to start thinking, not for this developer, because I'm, I don't know why he's stuck with us all this time, but for the next person who comes along, maybe we need to step up to the plate and give a hand, maybe, maybe. I mean, this isn't, we heard talk about this big-box retailer. This is a family-owned business. We've heard all along that the people who are going to be generating jobs in this economy are the small businesses. This is a small business. This will generate construction jobs, it'll generate ongoing jobs on the site, and it, you know, it wasn't my first choice there. You all know I'm totally devoted to a bowling alley, but, boy, this was my second choice. We didn't get a bowling alley, and we got Gordon Foods instead. And I was eternally grateful for all of the work that they've done. They commit to a community, they commit contributions, they sponsor things in communities. In fact, you know, we have a relationship with them from, you know, a previous alderman whose husband works for them in a whole different capacity, but they're a known entity in this city, and it's a shame to lose them. This property has been vacant for about ten years now, and I just want to make sure that while, to a certain class in any community, we're sending a message that, you know, we're going to hold firm for absolute adherence to our ordinance. That's one thing. On the other hand, we could also be sending a message that we're totally inflexible, and that worries me, and it really worries me. I think absolutely everybody, twenty thousand square feet and over, can adhere to this ordinance. These people are having trouble, and hopefully, we can continue to work with them, but I'm not real hopeful.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
I attended both of the meetings last Wednesday, and first and foremost, I want to thank the numerous residents that are in the environment and sustainability community from Chicago, from Citizens for Green or Evanston to the Environment Board, and many of them are still here tonight, and thank you for coming on such short notice, I think on a Wednesday morning at eight-thirty a.m., and spent two hours where you weren't going to work and trying to make revisions, really, last minute. I applaud over and over again how much our citizens come out to committees and boards and commissions, and they deserve our respect. They don't get paid a dime. They are tireless. Really, thank you so very much. And I wanted to say, what you received in your electronic packet, this is truly a compromise. The people that were around the table were developers, and there was, Alderman Rainey are both at the meeting, and not everybody at the meeting agreed. There was definitely, folks said, no, this is too stringent, no, this is not stringent enough, and it really was a coming of minds of a variety of people. So I think we need to respect that, and really sort of celebrate that we could come to this point. I was also in the later meeting with the developer, and Alderman Rainey was obviously also there, and we met with the developer previously as well. These are good people, they'd be great to have in the community, and unfortunately, after going through the revisions with the developer, they said, we'll get back to you to see if we can meet these fifteen pieces. And it seems that they're not willing to do that, for whatever reasons. I'm not saying that they're, you know, whatever the reasons are, they're not willing to do that. My frustration on when we found out about that, I want to voice as well, our staff knew that this developer would not meet those criteria on Friday afternoon at four-thirty, and we, as a council, did not know till Monday at four-thirty-five, I think. I'm a little frustrated with that, because then we have no room to talk, go back to the environment community, we have no time to discuss it, we have no time to do anything until really the last minute. And there are some of the people who are here tonight, because they had no idea that anything had changed, and I sent out an email to say, please come and make sure that the compromise that, you all took time off work, that you all spent a morning with us, really, once again, at the last minute, and it may be, you know, not go that way. So, once again, it's about process, it's about respecting our residents and what they do. And I also want to do a quick shout-out to Andrew Irwin, who spoke tonight. He came to the Ninth Ward Meeting, he's twenty-two, just graduated from school, and living with his folks in the Ninth Ward, but one of the first questions he asked at the Ninth Ward Meeting was, where do you stand on the, what happened with the green building ordinance? And Andrew's who's going to be inheriting Evanston, and his generation, and he came here tonight, I'm sure there's a lot of other things he'd rather be doing, but he came here to talk about green building and sustainability. And I also think we need to respect that, and hopefully get him on some board or commission. We need fresh faces. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, City Manager. Did you want to respond?
Just, Madam Mayor, members of the council, a clarification on the information from the developer. That information was received by me late Friday afternoon, that is absolutely correct. I had asked staff this morning, because it was late Friday, to talk once again with the developer, to see if there was any additional changes on their part. I felt it was not prudent to give the council information that I had not personally asked that be checked, because obviously, that's an important piece of information. That happened during the course of the morning. There was a couple of hour delay from, I think, the noon-time timeframe when it was established to when it got out. I take full responsibility for that delay, but I also felt it was important to give the council the most up-to-date and accurate information for your deliberations this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Rainey. I think your remarks were right on and eloquent, and I appreciate them. And Alderman Burris, I appreciate your remarks as well. I think, as the City Manager has said, we're trying to, we're trying to achieve a balance here between our obvious first priority, which is economic development in the city, but also the livability of our city. And I, I'm a little bit concerned, when we start removing paragraphs like four dash twenty-five dash five, the requirement reductions, I think we've, we've always tried to look at ways that we can be flexible, and, and I think there's, there must be a way here that we can, and I think Alderman Rainey hit on it. When you're looking at environmental impacts of the land that exists, that perhaps either the city is going to have to bear, but certainly, certainly are part of the health and safety and of the land itself, I think that we should be able, through our Planning and Development Committee, to assign a value to that. And whether that's, you know, five points that would bring them up to the required fifteen points, or whatever that was, I do think that there should be an opportunity for a committee of the city council to review that. I would hate to have this developer leave. As far as I know, they haven't come and asked us for any money, which is unusual, almost everyone wants something from us. It's likely that, given the commitment that they're willing to make to the community, the months and months that they've hung in there with us, trying to establish this in Evanston, when they could easily go to any of the surrounding communities and take their sales tax revenue and their jobs and everything else along with them, they have hung in there with us. And I think it would be cutting off our nose to spite our face if we don't take a look at this larger package here of what the land requires, what they're offering, and what the city would have to accept in terms of the cost to prepare the land for possibly another development. So I would encourage us to find a consensus here, a way to allow this to go forward, and hope that there's that, that at least willingness on the part of the council to encourage the continued dialogue with this developer.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I'm going to support the ordinance as it's drafted, but I would like to ask the staff to continue to work with the stakeholders, and perhaps consider, what I'll term, a possible appendix B, which would, along the lines with what Alderman Rainey suggested, these parameters are really tailored towards interior renovations, and I can live with that for now, but I think it would be appropriate to come up with a list for new construction, so some sort of appendix B for hopefully future inclusion. And that can include things like points for environmental cleanup or site remediation, things of that nature. So those things would be, would be big-ticket items, it's in our interest to get that kind of thing done, and I think that would address some of those concerns, hopefully in a timely fashion. But again, I'll support it as it is for now.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm going to support the ordinance as well, because I agreed to the compromise, and I wouldn't dream of violating the trust of our citizens. However, however, I hope that based on what Alderman Wilson said, what I feel, and what Alderman Fisk said, that our staff will continue to work with these folks and see if there isn't a way that we can bring this business to our city, if not this month, maybe next month, because we have, we have an environmental mess on our hands over there, and they have really raised it to our consciousness, and it's a real problem, and going forward, we have to fix it. So perhaps with their help and with the help of our staff, we can not only get a cleanup, but we can also get a new food store on Oakton.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
I know, we keep saying a further amendment, and working with staff and the developer, which I think is great, but once again, I think we're leaving out, you know, residents, citizens, people, citizens of Green or Evanston, let's get their input too on the new construction piece of it, if there needs to be an appendix piece of it, but I'm not, what I'm hearing is staff again versus, what I don't want to happen is what happened two weeks ago, where something's drawn up by staff, and we haven't had any citizen input, we haven't really had any input at the council level. So just to make sure that citizens are involved, once again, thank you.
Thank you, seeing no further lights. It has been moved and seconded that we pass ordinance seventeen oh eleven, codifying and amending ordinance fourteen oh zero nine, green building ordinance. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Holmes?
Do we need a motion to follow up on, for the staff to proceed with looking at external issues, to make sure that that, you know, would be included, because I think that's really important?
I think Ms. Hurley already had said...
Mayor, I was, I was going to make a request to call the wards as a direction.
Okay.
Or make a reference.
All right, thank you, Alderman Holmes. The motion passes. And moving right along. Call of the wards. Alderman, who are we starting with today? Alderman Win? Well, we have call of the wards on the agenda first. All right, let's do a special order of business.
Roll it all together.
We are revising.
Calling the wards is going to be...
We are revising the agenda.
We'll tell you how much time we spent talking about that last week.
Where are all...
All you had to do was call me.
All right, I'm going to try to do this without crying. Alderman Jean Baptiste. Your Honor, the judge, come over here. Okay, I'm getting teary-eyed. I can't imagine this council without you. You've always been here while I've been here, and you'll be a perfect judge, because you are the best of all of us at working out a compromise, and if I was before you, I would have confidence... of all of us at working out a compromise. And if I was before you, I would have confidence that you would listen to both sides, even though you should only listen to my side if I'm ever before you. So I'm going to read this. This is a resolution upon the occasion of the retirement of Alderman Lionel Jean Baptiste. Whereas Lionel Jean Baptiste served as Alderman of the Second Ward of the City of Evanston during, during the years 2001 through 2011. Whereas during his tenure, Alderman Jean Baptiste served as a member of the following boards, commissions, committees, and panels: Administration and Public Works, Human Services, Rules, should just say everything, Planning and Development, Community Development, Economic Development, City Schools, Minority W E B E Development, Enterprise Committee. And whereas Alderman Jean Baptiste has served the citizens of his ward and the entire city with distinction, giving freely of his time, energy, and ability, it should say in enormous amounts. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Evanston, Cook County, Illinois, that the City Council does hereby express great appreciation to Alderman Jean Baptiste for his service to the city and regrets the occasion of his retirement. That a copy of this resolution executed by the mayor and attested to by the city clerk be sent, well handed, to Alderman Jean Baptiste. Sorry about that. Thank you, Melissa. The City of Evanston presented this with thanks and appreciation to Alderman Lionel Jean Baptiste upon his retirement as Alderman of the Second Ward for his 10 years of dedicated service from 2001 to 2011 to the city and residents of Evanston, Illinois.
Thank you very much.
You want to talk last?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good, because I'll start crying when you talk. So that'll be last. It'll be much better. Here you go.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Call to Alderman Win.
Well, I'm glad I'm first and not just ahead of Lionel, because his eloquence is very hard to compare. Yes. Lionel, I can't believe it's been 10 years. I have so enjoyed sitting next to you for all of this time. Sometimes we argued, but mostly we chuckled. And, and even when we had our differences, they never left the chamber. And I, I so appreciated that. I, I've watched as you went on that steep learning curve that we all experience here, and you became a real expert at being an Alderman in the City of Evanston, and one that I learn from all the time. So I, and I, I so appreciate your eloquence. I feel sometimes as though I'm listening to Creole in your eloquence, because I, I think of it as being Haitian, you know, the way Lionel can, even when he doesn't want to agree with you, can really make you feel good about it in the end. And then the power with which you have talked to us over and over again, over the years, about investing in our youth and recognizing how important they are to our future. I really appreciated that. So, good luck. I have to say, I have never seen Lionel smile so much as in the last two weeks. Really. It kind of makes you wonder a little bit. It's, I feel like the mayor that this, it feels a little unreal. This is the shortest time we've ever had to know that someone is leaving us and leaving us with such a big smile. But I also want to point out to Don that there is a pattern here, that members of the City Council who sit next to me seem to be elevated to the bench with some regularity now. So get ready. But Lionel, I will miss you, and you must come back and see us. And I know we'll all hear from you.
Thank you.
Okay, so a little business first. First of all, Mr. City Manager, I would like to make a referral to have your city staff work with the involved stakeholders and relevant committee, committees and community members to develop what I'll just term a Appendix B to the ordinance that we, that we adopted tonight, to include points that were, I guess, more, are more appropriate for new construction, as discussed at the meeting. I want to encourage everyone to go see the Brillantine Show, which I happened to see last weekend, a great, great performance by the, put on by the McGaw YMCA. And be on the lookout for a Fourth Ward meeting, which we'll be having the middle of March. I'm still trying to finalize the date and location, so that will be posted on the city website in the next day or two. And Lionel, I'd like to thank you for a number of things as one of the newer members of the City Council. I really appreciate, in my position here, your perspective, your guidance, your input on a number of things as we've, as I've learned how to assume this position and this role. And I'd specifically like to thank you as a community member, because as a member of this community before I was an Alderman, I've seen your good work, I've seen your hard work and your dedication, I've seen your commitment to the youth of the, of the City of Evanston, and, and even more broadly than that. So I can't thank you enough for your service, and I look forward to, to seeing you in the, in the Daily Center soon.
Thank you.
Take care.
My first reaction to Lionel, to Alderman Jean Baptiste leaving is that he's made me the middle child. And I say that because it was a buffer between, so the old council and the new council, with me being the, and the last council being the only person that was on the council from that, from that group. So, you know, now I'm between Alderman Rainey and Alderman Win, and then all the new, new council. So I'm the middle, middle child here. But I know, I just, I want to thank you. Thank you for so many things, but most of all, I thank you for being my brother, which includes being my friend, my advisor, my supporter, my mentor, my mediator, all those things that have helped me since I've been on this council. And I truly, truly appreciate it. You know, the Good Book says that too, everything there's a season. And I truly believe that this is your season. So I want you to just to keep that swagger in your walk, and keep your head all about you when others are losing theirs and blaming it on you, okay? And you'll be just fine. I know that for, everything for you has not been a crystal stair, but still you rise. And I want you to remember the words of Lena Horne, who says that, "It's not the load that breaks you, but the way you carry it." You carry yours well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, with me, a little business first. There is a Sixth Ward meeting coming up Wednesday evening, March 2, 7:00 PM at the Presbyterian Homes. It'll be in the Kimball Fitness Center, which is just off of Grant Street, near Ridgeway. And it's above the fitness center in one of the private rooms upstairs. The Joe McCray will be here, will be there to discuss the three-in-one implementation and how everyone can participate in that. As far as you, Lionel, I'm so happy to have these two years, almost, not even, but to be on council with you. It's been a privilege, and I've seen those qualities as a judge shine so clearly here that I, that I am not happy, but I'm sure this is a good move. And I, and I think we all will appreciate the entire communities, greater Chicago, from your efforts there. I also am proud to live in the same community as you and to see what you've done with the Haitian community, with the Haitian Congress, and hope to continue in being involved in that and, or as a resident, but support that and continue to follow your work along those lines. So congratulations and good luck.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, my apologies in advance. I will not be here for the next City Council meeting, and neither will Lionel. I'm going to be attending the National League of Justice Conference in Washington, DC, and hoping to get some learning and some enrichment. So Lionel, our time together now seems so fleeting. It's only not even two years. I feel as if I haven't served with you long enough. I serve you now, as another resident of Evanston. I appreciate, I have appreciated these almost two years, your supreme civility, your diplomatic touch. Again, I still have a lot to learn, and you are a great example for all of us. I've been glad for your perspective on all those issues that are so important to us all: youth, crime, job creation, development of Evanston's assets. You've given voice to residents who are largely invisible over all these years, and there is so much value to that. And I'm grateful too for your international commitment to everyone's humanity, whether you're a resident of Evanston or a resident of Haiti. I think you've served us all very well. So on behalf of all Evanston residents, thank you for your years of service. I don't think you'll hear it enough, but we should all be very grateful for all you've done for Evanston.
Lionel and Madam Mayor, I need to do just a little bit of business first. I want to, I want to add on to Alderman Wilson's reference and include the following items. The checklist does not consider the following items: the redevelopment of an industrial brown site or brownfield or a key redevelopment site in the city. It doesn't consider transportation, in other words, the location. Doesn't consider bike racks, car sharing, preferred parking, or fuel-efficient vehicles used by the business. Does not concern, include site design, include inclusion of native low-irrigation plants, drought-tolerant plants, in other words, less use of water. Doesn't give points for incremental improvements, for example, increased energy savings. There should really be a lower threshold that people could work up to if they accomplish all the other points. So I think there's a lot of other items that are not included. And I think if the citizens, who I have as much respect for as Alderman Burris has, but I do think we need a little more flexibility and a little more open-mindedness and a little more consideration of how things really happen and the progress we're able to make in this community. One other thing, we bought two properties with tax increment financing money on Howard Street. And we are arranging to show one of the properties to a very notable theater group. So we're very excited about that. Lionel. One thing, the one thing, I know you're very smart and you're a wonderful Alderman, but the one thing, when I, I started thinking about what to say is, that has so impressed me about you is your involvement with your family, your mom and your kids and dear Lenore. So, I mean, I, and your sister was here tonight. But that really, really impressed me. Lenore's here?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. He's a good guy. I've been on a few councils, and I, I don't want you all to get big-headed here, but I really think of all the councils, that this, this is the best ever, really. It is just the best mix of people. It really is. And Lionel, you've just really contributed to that. You really have. So I know Dolores started, you know, touching on the religious stuff, but what I'm going to say-
That's all I know, Aiden. That's all I know.
And that's what you bring to me. But, you know, when, when people leave a world, and you're leaving this world, you frequently hear them say, "Oh, he's going to a better place." And I think you're going to a better place. So congratulations.
Thank you.
You and your family must be very honored. And I think we are all honored by your elevation to judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, a little bit of business first. I want to thank all the Ninth Ward residents who attended the meeting last week at the Piccolo Theater. Thanks for coming out on a cold night. And to all the staff that came out, and the Ridgeville Park District. It was really a seamless meeting.
Thank you very much.
Start over. Thank you to the Ninth Ward residents for coming out to the Ninth Ward meeting last week at the Piccolo Theater. And thanks to staff and the Ridgeville Park District for doing presentations. It was, it was really great. Lionel?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't agree a lot, but that's okay. I will, I will, I will miss your perspective, where many times you made me stretch and think and do my homework, even more so. So I would read a packet, or I'd read something, and I would think, where's Lionel going to come from on this one? Because I knew it wasn't going to be probably the same place that I was coming from, which is a good thing. And I, and I do believe we all are very different on council. And the vacuum that you are, you are leaving, your perspective will not be filled. And that, I will miss that. I miss that your focus on youth, it is, it is constant. And how youth can participate in the community and finding ways to do that, I think is important. I think it's something that I hope that one of us, or whoever ends up in your seat, will continue to talk about and to push our staff and to push our community to continue to think about, how do we make Evanston a great place for that middle bracket, that 18 to 25-year-old? How can we make it a place here? And I think you have done that better than anybody else on council. So I thank you. And once again, congratulations. And speeding tickets? No.
Well, Lionel, gosh, I'm going to talk to you in a second. But first, first of all, tomorrow night, First Ward Meeting, Evanston Public Library, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Please come out. City Manager is going to be there in his cheerful way, going to tell you all the things that we've been doing in the city, and will answer all of your questions. Lionel, I will miss you. I think unlike everyone else sitting up here, I knew you from down there for 10 years. And all the issues that I brought forth and championed, I remember you would refer to us as, "The activists are here tonight." And I always thought, oh, my gosh, what does that mean? The activists are here tonight. Is that good or, or is it bad? Well, sometimes it was a little bit critical, but almost always it was good. And as Alderman Burris said, your presence up here made us do our homework even more. That, all of the things that are quality of life issues here in Evanston, you didn't gloss over because they didn't affect your ward. You didn't, you didn't diminish what we were saying because it didn't affect you and your constituents directly. You considered everything that we said in such a thoughtful manner and in such a respectful manner, that it really provides that kind of leadership that I see in you every day. When I came up here on the dais, I think the first thing I said to you, I was so glad to see you, but the first thing I said to you was, gosh, I am not sure I'm totally comfortable here, having spent so many years sitting over there. And I said, I'm not even sure I know exactly what to do all the time. And you would kind of nudge me under the table, and you'd say, you're supposed to, you're supposed to object here, you're supposed to, you know, you're supposed to do this, you're supposed to do that. And I would be very confused, but I, I got it. And I really appreciated your, your help on that. I understand that it's been hard for you to sit between Alderman Win and me. And I think, you love it. You're so sweet. And, and that's, that's good that you've got a family of strong women around you, because I think being up here on the council between Alderman Win and me really has helped. But I've, I've learned a lot from you, and I've, I've taken it all to heart. And I, I will always remember- will always remember serving on Human Services with you, and your advocacy on, on behalf of at-risk youth, I think was really stunning to me, and made me think very, very hard about what we are as a community. I've, I've been fortunate to, to live and have a close association with a foreign country, and it's unusual, I think, to have the ability to realize that when you do, when you have lived in a, in a foreign country, you have an entirely different perspective on the world than you do just living here in the great Midwest, where we're so, we're so safe, and we're so secure, and we're so lucky, when just a few miles away, in another land, there may be war and bloodshed and terrible things happening. And so, I have enjoyed talking with you about that, and sharing that with you, because it's, it's important, I think, to the work that we do up here as well. So I will miss you, I've told you that 27 times, I will miss you, and-
Best of luck.
Thank you.
You have my respect forever.
Thank you.
Just hope I never have to come up here before you.
No, not yet.
If you guys would excuse me, I need to go to the bathroom and come right back. Can I do that?
Thanks for sharing. Over sharing.
I have a bit of business then, while we're waiting. Madam Mayor, if I may-
Go right ahead.
Members of the City Council, Wednesday evening, the Northwestern University Associated Student Government has invited all of you to attend a meeting, and I know that Alderman Grover and the mayor are attending, and Alderman, and Alderman Holmes, is that the group then? The mayor, Alderman Grover? Alderman Holmes and Alderman Wilson. Okay, very good, four. Thank you.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Seven o'clock, I think it's seven o'clock. I have it in my calendar, let me look.
I want to thank Lenore for sharing him with us. You've been very gracious. I, I know Lionel has spent a lot of time here, and he's done great work, but I appreciate what his family went through letting us have him. And you're, and you're glad it's done. Hello, Ayesha. Well, we made it extra long, so that you'd get your money's worth. You don't have to stay while we're in executive session.
Is he going to stay for that?
I, I think he can leave without executive session. You okay, Rodney?
Hit your knee? Nice job. Hit your knee?
Yeah.
Good job.
You gotta be ready. Okay, Alderman Jean Baptiste, you're not being called on yet, City Clerk.
Telling everybody else, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure. We're all going to miss you, but I thought I'd give you a little something of myself to take with you.
Wow.
I framed it for you also. I even put your picture on it.
Wow.
I'm going to read it to you. What it says is, "Alderman Lionel Jean Baptiste, April 201 through February 211. Says 'The man of our who seems quite humble in his newly-acquired power. His eloquent dissertations faultless in his clarity. Gave understanding to all as he seemed to tower. He championed equity for the issues that came his way. His decisions and concerns went both near and far. And in the eyes of the Haitian Congress, he's a superstar. His involvement in community and youth awareness programs gained him notoriety as an advocate for those fort-unfortunate, those less fortunate than he, with the development of programs to empower others to be the future leaders, movers, and shakers of the community. But now we all will say congratulations and much success to you as you go forward to a higher calling from the state. Make us proud as you deliver your judgments without malice or hate. Farewell, bon voyage, adios, hasta la vista, shalom, to our Alderman of the Second Ward. No longer the title of Alderman you wear, for now it is your honor Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste. Please take care."
Oh, you're not ready to talk yet. It's not your turn yet. City staff?
It's our turn now, Alderman. I'll be, Suzette and I, on behalf of the other departments, have a few presentations that we would like to make. So I'm going to start off first from the library. There's a card here, and there's a, a bag, and the Director of the Library wanted me to convey to you that if for some reason, and I couldn't think of one, and neither could she, that things don't work out in the court, that you have a career alternative with her as a storyteller.
Thank you.
The fact that you did such a marvelous job reading to the kids, I guess a few weeks ago, where you actually sat down, took off your shoes, and, and did a great job. And so she would be looking forward to you, your participation, whether you're in the court or not, maybe as a volunteer.
Thank you.
This is something that we'd like you to open. It's from the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. I won't, I won't mention what some folks have called this in, in the past. However, it's sort of a tradition for our department to give to folks who are leaving the city, who have been in leadership roles, and you have really provided a great deal of leadership to our department, and the support that you have provided, as well as a number of tasks that you have given us, which we hope that we will be able to meet your expectations. That is a gym bag.
Right, thank you.
And we expect that you would use that. And finally, yeah, there's one other, at least from my side, Suzette, let's go next. To put in the gym bag after you've used it, is from the Fire Department, a sweatshirt, a hat. And a pair of sweatpants.
Yes.
Yeah. And Greg, our Fire Chief, has said that you are always welcome to join any of the fire stations for dinner at any time, that you're always welcome.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for all of your support.
I was going to pull out like several sheets of paper and say, "This is my speech," but in the interest of time, so, as Doug said, we're representing all the departments, and we want to thank you for your partnership in keeping the city on the right track. In addition to being a staunch advocate for your ward, you also were an advocate on behalf of the employees, and we really appreciate that. You often challenged our staff to a higher level of preparedness by asking very detailed questions which oftentimes made us wet. However, but you really made sure that we knew what we were talking about, and we appreciate that as well. So congratulations, Your Honor, we're proud of your success, and on the slim chance that you should see one of us before you, we ask that you rule in our favor. Evanston and the city employees will miss you greatly. Well, you're not leaving Evanston, but you-
But I have gifts too, so.
You do?
Oh, yes, I do. All right. So, this is our standard mug that we provide. On behalf of the Police Department, you have another hat, and also a shirt as well.
Thank you.
And then, polo shirt.
Wow.
You're getting lots of bags today, for some strange reason, so. Administrative Services Division.
Thank you.
And then, you get to be the first to have one of these. This is gonna, this is a part of our recycling incentive program, and it is an insulated grocery bag, which says, "Thank you for thinking green," which we all know that green stands for greater recycling in every Evanston neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, you get one of those as well. And then last but not least, our traditional street sign. I don't know if your wife's going to let you hang that up in the house anywhere, but you might. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Do we have to resign to get one of those?
Yeah.
Don't anyone get ideas.
And Alderman Jean Baptiste, on behalf of the, of the men and women of the City of Evanston, the men and women who have sat in this chair as City Manager during your term, I, I want to thank you, I really echo Suzette's comment. I think you have made all of us do our job better, always reminding us of what we are here to do, and that is to serve the residents of Evanston. Just a personal note, when I was hired as City Manager, I recall Heidi Voorhees, the recruiter, talking about the council's deliberations, and I knew I was okay at one point when Heidi said that you had some questions about me, but finally said, "I'm cool with Wally." So, so I appreciated that very much. So Alderman, on behalf of, of all the staff of the City of Evanston, we have the honor working with you and for you, and wish you the best of luck in your new career.
All right, Lionel, you do get to talk now, yes.
And I did have some notes, Madam Mayor, and now it's buried all under these things. But here they are, so, you know, I always need some extra time, so, thank you very much.
Turn your mic on, please.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Lenore, who's been my partner for 38 years, been married for 35 years, and I always remind her, and I'll let you guys know, she's my little piece of heaven, so, this is what's happening. To my daughter, who's next to her, Ayesha, if anything is happening with me and Lenore, and we become unable to function or whatever, take us to Ayesha. She'll take care of us. I want to, as I said last, two weeks ago, say thank you to my constituents, because you have honored me with great responsibility. You've given me your vote, you've given me your constructive criticism, you've pushed me, and when I was in a corner, you came through with great support. And the Second Ward itself, because of its size and, and diverse interests, has had to be managed by really a number of, of neighborhood organizations. And so I want to say thank you to all of these people, Betty Payne of Canal Park Neighbors, DeKell Fonda, Dewey Darrow Neighbors, DeKell, please stand up. DeKell has been a pillar in her neighborhood, because she defends the quality of life. She aspired for more for all of us, and she has stood up for not just her neighborhood's narrow interests, but for all of us, when she has fought for peace in the world and for equity. I would also want to say thank you to all of the crew members, Adam Finney-Zahn and others who have stood up from the Dewey-Darrow Neighbors. I want to say thank you to Keisha Knox, Patrick Stain, Peter Breathwaith, who is here with us. Peter, stand up. From the Greenwood-Darrow Neighbors, who mediate issues, issues having to do with, you know, old neighbors, new neighbors, young and old, to try to make sure that everybody feels comfortable coexisting with one another. I want to thank the Valencia Fraser from King Lab Neighbors, who organized to make sure that the drug dealers who wanted to take over Fowler understood that there was a different interest that needed to be protected in that area, and have come to stabilize their community. I want to thank people like Ms. Weeks, the senior citizen who has been organizing for years, and have made sure that all of the seniors, all of the neighbors in her neighborhood have a say, and make sure that their say is heard by me, the Alderman, and my predecessor, Dennis Drummer. I want to thank also Tina Payton, who's here. Tina is on the eastern part of, of the ward, and we fought many battles around, around projects along Emerson and Maple, but always firm, but with a smile, and always remaining friends. I would also want to thank, in that eastern block, also St. Mardablanis, who sometimes the, the perspective and the dreams sort of outstrip us, but nevertheless, she perseveres and tries to give her contribution, and Cindy Smith, who is the Chair of the, the condo association at Optima Views. Also want to thank Mr. Graves, the Madison Neighbors, also Wanda Mays from the, the Crown Park West Neighbors, and there are some others who were not necessarily in my ward, but who constantly made sure that they stood up and made their views heard. Such individual like Betty Esther, who's hiding behind that post there, Betty. I don't know, you didn't say anything tonight, I've never seen you come to a ward, to a council meeting and be silent. I don't know what was up. And I want to say thank you to, to the staff members. I had said two weeks ago that I felt that I was spoiled by you guys' attentiveness, and when I talked to the other members of the council, they all would echo the same sentiments, that you guys have been there, when you called on to, to respond, you know, you respond, and you formed the basis of the kind of collaboration that's important for us to advance the agenda of the City Council. kind of collaboration that's important for us to advance the agenda of the City Council. So, for every one of you, I think you worth your weight in gold. You do the work, you're knowledgeable. Often, when I talk about capacity building, when I, I talk about the crisis in Haiti, I refer to Evanston, where we have such a strong staff, very knowledgeable staff, who are able, who are experts in their field. Unfortunately, in Haiti, a lot of the municipalities, it's just the mayor and his secretary who takes over and may not even have a budget to implement whatever his aspirations may be. Here, we are fortunate. We have a strong staff. We have, we still have a very strong budget, and as compared to the rest of the world, so, to many places in the world. So, I think that we are fortunate. I wanna say to the media as well, those of you who have been here, from the Evanston Review, Evanston Now, Evanston Now had, I remember when you first came out, Bill, you had, I had raised some criticism, because there was something somebody said that you said. And you said, well, if you're going to criticize us, at least say the name of our organization correctly, so people know what to look up when, when they're looking for Evanston Now. I wanna thank the Roundtable, the Patch, who has come on board recently, the Sentinel, the Tribune, who every week is, is here, every two weeks is here covering us, and the Daily Northwestern, who I've enjoyed working with the students to just give them the, the opportunity to be able to write their stories. To the council, you know, this, this has been a family. It really has been. And I will be going to work someplace else, but you guys are always gonna be my friends, my, you know, folks that I could call, and to feel that proud that I've been associated with you. Every single one of you, and I already told you guys that, that, you know, the one that I fall in and out of love with is Alderman Rainey. But the making up is always sweet. So, you know, and I remember after the last meeting, she, she said, well, you know, I've broken up with him over the last month and a half or so. But it's been that kind of, the fight for a better Evanston, the passion that has, that has driven us, have put us at odds sometimes over tactical issues, but not over strategic interests. Because we all have wanted a better Evanston, the best that it could be. We all have wanted our neighborhoods to be the top that it could be. We fought the battles when we felt that a lot of attention, a lot of investment was going downtown, and the neighborhoods were being neglected. We demanded that there be some turnaround, some equity. And so, I think we've been here together. You know, I believe that we've accomplished some great things on this council. We've, you know, the West Evanston TIF was, I remember we voted eight to one, with Alderman Newman being mad at me at that time. And then he turned around at Economic Development and proposed all kinds of initiatives to try to make sure that, you know, work was implemented to, to advance the TIF. But it's been that kind of relationship, I think, with every single one of you, that I feel, you know, a brotherly and sisterly kind of relationship. And so, invite me to whatever is going on, and I want you guys to know that I will be reaching out to you to make sure that we continue to stay close. Don, I will cross your path downtown, one way or another. And we'll continue to work together, because we live in this small town. And our collective future depends on how well we do, how well we manage it. So, thank you, every single one of you, for all of the love. And thank you for the staff, for all of the love. Chief Ellington, thank you very much for being so supportive and attentive. And I will miss you. Thank you very much.
Now that I'm crying, Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion to make?
I do. Pursuant to, microphone on. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, security, litigation, and maintenance. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C5, C6, C8, C11, and C21. Is there a second?
Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Vers.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Hi, hi, Annie, how are you?